Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's special committee of the whole meeting. I kindly ask our city administrator, Ms. Dawkins, to please take the role call.
Bruno?
Bruno here.
Burkhart?
Burkhart here.
Ruby?
Ruby here.
Kaven?
Kaven here.
Kilberg?
Kilberg here.
Kosterog?
Kosterog here.
Maladra?
Maladra here.
Marx?
Marx here.
McGowan?
McGowan here.
Swanson? Swanson, did you say? Okay, I, thank you.
Everyone except, oh, we have a full house tonight, correct?
Correct.
Fantastic. Ladies and gentlemen, just this brief housekeeping matter. Tonight's meeting is being conducted virtually in compliance with Governor's Executive Order 2020-74, as it prohibits in-person gatherings of any size. As such, it is not practical nor prudent to allow the public, the press, or other interested parties to be present in council chamber. Staff members are also participating virtually, with the exception of the city administrator to my left, and assistant city administrator to my right, who are necessary to assist with the online and virtual experience. As a requirement of the Open Meetings Act, I am required to be physically present at the meeting location. It should be further noted that this will be the city's operating procedure until such time as gatherings of any size are again permitted. With that, ladies and gentlemen, of the special committee of the whole, and of course, everyone tuning in, Item 2, under Items of Business, Item 2A is the Presentation and Discussion Regarding the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget and Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Projections. With that, I turn the floor over to our city administrator, Ms. Dawkins. She will walk us through the presentation, and as we've done so in the past, we kindly ask that all questions and comments be reserved for following her presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'll give me just one moment while I share my screen. And it's not showing.
Ms. Dawkins is going to share her screen for everyone's benefit. We're just trying to make certain it connects appropriately.
It's clicking. It's waiting. Okay, looks like we're good. Give me one more second.
There we go.
So, good evening again. Tonight's presentation is meant to be an overview of the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget and a preview of the fiscal year 23 budget. We recognize that there is a lot of information to digest, but we wanted to give you some context to go with the numbers that were included in tonight's agenda packet. For those viewing this meeting who may not be familiar with the city's budget process, I would like to provide a brief introduction. The City of Geneva follows the budget system of financial planning and management. Under this process, the municipality must appoint a budget officer. It then becomes the responsibility of the budget officer to complete an annual budget, which must be adopted before the beginning of the fiscal year to which it applies. The budget shall contain an estimate of revenues available to the city for the fiscal year for which the budget is drafted, together with recommended expenditures for the city and all of the city's departments, boards, and commissions. Revenue estimates and expenditure recommendations shall be presented in a manner which is in conformity with good fiscal management practices. The budget system provides two specific advantages. First, a budget system allows the corporate authorities to delete, add to, or to change the budget. Second, a budget system contains a specific provision that authorizes the accumulation of funds over a period of years to be used to construct capital improvements, along with a specific provision authorizing a fund for contingency purposes. In the City of Geneva, the city administrator is the budget officer. However, I work closely with and rely heavily on our finance director, Rita Cruz, and all of our senior management team to put together the draft budget that is before you this evening. In addition to the fiscal year 22 budget, you may recall that in fiscal year 19, we began a two-year budgeting process. This process provides an opportunity to review two budget years and enables capital projects to be bid earlier in the season so that they can begin in earnest once the fiscal year begins, often resulting in substantial cost savings. As I have shared on many previous occasions, a budget is a planning document. It sets forth the estimates for revenues and expenditures. While we try to paint as accurate a picture as possible, inevitably something happens. And for the fiscal year 21 budget, that surely was an understatement. We entered into fiscal year 21 in a strong financial position. The general fund projections, based upon year-end estimates and the fiscal year 21 proposed budget, indicated the city would have a fund balance exceeding the goal of at least 90 days' operating expenditures in compliance with the city's financial policies. This was the result of the city making a concerted effort, following the Great Recession, to position the city with resources to provide the flexibility to meet unexpected costs and position the city to take advantage of unexpected opportunities. In addition, the city planned to continue to make investments in capital equipment that had been delayed for many years. I have selected the two quotes you see on the screen, as I felt they represented much of what this budget presentation represents. We will start this evening looking at the current fiscal year budget, where we've come from, and then proceed to paint a picture of the upcoming fiscal years. I threw in the second quote because I felt it certainly rings true, given the events of the past year. The city's fiscal year 21 budget, which is the year we're currently in, was adopted on February 18, 2020. Less than one month later, COVID-19 became a household term. The federal and state governments issued state of emergency and disaster declarations. The city council then convened on a Sunday evening and found that a state of emergency and local disaster existed, and the mayor declared a local state of emergency. That following Tuesday morning, the city's senior management team convened in the Emergency Operations Center to start strategizing about operations and contingency plans. In less than a month's time, the world as we knew it had changed in an instant, and through the leadership and direction of the mayor and the city council, the dedication of our professional staff, and the tireless work of all of our employees, we were able to pivot and weather the storm. I would like to thank, begin by thanking the mayor and the city council for their leadership during this ongoing pandemic. Thank you to the senior management team for their steadfastness, dedication, and creativity, and especially a big thank you to all of our employees for being flexible and tireless and ensuring that the city's operations continued uninterrupted. As I mentioned, the city was able to quickly pivot, and we continue to provide the services that our community expects and relies upon. By June, the management team had provided a list of suggested cuts or delays to the fiscal 2021 budget. As is to be expected, the low-hanging fruit for cuts or delays came primarily from capital expenditures. Over $4.8 million in projects and equipment were identified to be cut and/or delayed. In addition, while no specific cuts were identified for the operating budgets, this came with the understanding that summer or temporary positions would remain unfilled, future or current vacancies would be delayed and filled only after thorough review of the necessity, the filling of the police officer position that was approved for fiscal year 21 would be delayed, and all travel related to professional development would be curtailed, both from a practical and a budget standpoint. The mantra became mindful spending. If not absolutely necessary, then delay the expenditure. Later, the federal government provided $150 billion in coronavirus relief funds known as the CARES Act. States and units of local government, counties and cities, with populations that exceed 500,000, were eligible for a direct payment from the feds. Illinois received over $4.9 billion, and Kane County received $92 million in relief funds. The City of Geneva made application to Kane County and was successful in receiving a little more than $1.2 million for reimbursement of public safety payroll expenses, whose services were subsequently dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. One of the stipulations of receiving CARES Act funding was that municipalities were not allowed to transfer any portion of their coronavirus relief fund award to other entities, including but not limited to businesses and not-for-profit organizations. The county established separate programs aimed at assisting those entities using the CARES Act funding. On the screen before you is a summary of the budget adjustments that were made, as I just described. So you'll notice in the top chart are the capital improvement adjustments that we made for all of the various funds, and then the bottom chart is showing you the payroll expenses that were reimbursed through CARES Act funding. While the city was not able to reallocate CARES Act funding to other entities, various measures were implemented that, while reduced anticipated revenues, provided some relief to the community. The city council authorized a waiver of all renewal license fees from May 1 through April 30, 2021, a suspension of the 5% municipal utility tax on water for all customers from July 15, 2020, through December 14, 2020, a suspension of penalties for late or non-payment of utility bills from March 1, 2020, through November 22, 2020, a suspension of disconnections for non-payment until after April 30, 2021, instituted a 12-month no-interest repayment plan for utility customers who were having difficulty paying the utility bill, created temporary accommodations to facilitate curbside pickup service for retailers and restaurant and bars, including relaxing parking restrictions, sign restrictions, and authorizing the use of public property for outdoor dining expansion, suspended the collection of parking fees for the parking garage and commuter parking lots, and provided additional 50 refuse receptacles throughout the downtown area and added a weekday refuse collection. All told, these actions resulted in an estimated unrealized revenue of approximately $750,000 in unanticipated expenditures and the approximate amount of $25,000. Based upon current projections, and I would remind you that we're only nine months into the current fiscal year, we estimate that the city will realize about 25% less in overall revenue from budget, and expenditures will be about 30% less than budgeted. The current indications are based upon the actions and foresight that the city council and the city's financial, that the city's financial position should remain stable through the close of this fiscal year, which ends on April 30, 2021. And I would point out that anytime we're talking about projected numbers, in this particular chart, it's based on the information that we knew or anticipated as of the end of the calendar year. So how do you prepare a budget when so much remains uncertain? This is an advantage of the city's budget process. The budget is literally a plan. We make assumptions and we set out the plan. If those assumptions do not come to fruition, then we make a new plan. In addition, since the city started utilizing a two-year budget process, there are few surprises because you know what's ahead as far as the budget is concerned. When we presented the fiscal year 21 budget last year, we also provided a forecast for the 2022 budget. Same holds true for this year. We will present the 2022 budget, and in your documents, you will also see a forecast for the fiscal year 23 budget. This slide depicts the budget process we follow. We start in earnest in November with a strategic planning workshop with the city council, senior management team, and the SPAC chair. Once the priorities are established, then staff formulates and submits their budget requests incorporating as many of the priorities that were established based upon resources available. Once budgets have been submitted, staff meets with me, the finance director, and the assistant city administrator to provide justification for their submittal. The budget goes through several revisions prior to getting to the point where we are this evening. After tonight's discussion, there are likely to be more refinements, and then, once the budget is adopted, there is still opportunity for budget amendments based upon any given set of circumstances. The priorities that were established by the city council at the strategic planning workshop in November are depicted on the slide. You will notice that several of the priorities are the same as last year with a few new additions. The priorities relate to economic vitality, strong governance, environmental stewardship, and excellent municipal resources. You will see that these priorities are reflected in the actual budgeted items and the goals that are set by each depart, and in the goals that are set by each department, and you'll find those goals in the agenda packet beginning on page 142. This slide is a snapshot of the proposed fiscal year 22 budget. The city's budget consists of 37 different funds that are categorized into three different types of funds: governmental, proprietary, and fiduciary. The governmental funds are further categorized into the general fund, special revenue funds, debt service funds, and capital project funds. Proprietary funds include enterprise funds and internal service funds, and the fiduciary funds are the trust and agency funds. The proposed total budget for fiscal year 2022 is $102,838,110, with the general fund proposed at $19.6 million. For comparison, this is approximately a 3.7% decrease over fiscal year 2021 budget, with the general fund having a decrease of approximately 1.8%. Given the circumstances of the past year, the proposed 2022 budget is not dissimilar from the original fiscal year 21 budget. As such, tonight, we will focus on the highlights of the 2022 budget. The general fund derives the majority of its revenues from three major sources: property tax, sales tax, including the non-home rule sales tax, and state income tax. The proposed fiscal year 22 budget keeps revenues flat in comparison to both the fiscal year 21 budget and the fiscal year 21 projected. These revenue estimates are based in part on information provided by the Illinois Municipal League and our own calculations based upon year-to-date actuals. In addition to the ultimate impact of the pandemic, effective January 1, 2021, significant changes to the taxation of online sales was instituted in Illinois. The Leveling the Plainfield for Illinois Retail Act requires marketplace facilitators and eligible remote retailers to collect both Illinois 6.25% sales tax and any locally imposed sales tax, in other words, our non-home rule sales tax, instead of the 6.25% use tax on online purchases from sellers based where the product is delivered. This is likely to reduce the use tax revenues significantly while increasing local sales taxes. The impact is almost impossible to predict because the use tax was distributed by population, where sales tax distributions depend on the tax rates and the destination address of the customers. We will continue to monitor the revenues and make adjustments as necessary. The general fund budget as presented includes the continuation of the renewal license fee waiver for all of fiscal year 22. That would be from May 1, 2021, through April 30, 2022. This results in a revenue reduction of approximately $200,000. As is the case for fiscal year 21 licensing, this waiver would only apply to renewal licenses, not to new or additional licenses. The ability to provide services to those experiencing a mental health crisis has risen to the forefront of law enforcement. As such, the police department has taken several steps throughout the past five years to train our officers as crisis intervention officers and provide training in mental health, first aid, and peer support. In addition, in 2017, the police department created a mental health advocate specialty assignment. This is a sworn police officer who, in addition to regular patrol responsibilities, serves as a liaison between the police department and social service organizations. In fiscal year 2015, the city and the police department entered into an agreement with the Association for Individual Development Victim Services to provide on-call social workers to assist city staff to provide mental health services to our community. In the initial year of the agreement, AID provided service for 50 cases. This year, the total number of cases currently stands at 120, with nearly half of the year still to go. To date, in fiscal year 21, AID has provided services to 260 clients. This is a 14% increase over the previous year and a 140% increase from our inaugural year. In August of 2020, AID approached the police department in regards to a pilot program to assign a social worker to work out of the police department one day per week. The pilot program has been extremely beneficial to the community and the police department. Therefore, the fiscal 2022 budget includes funding to provide this service on a regular, one-day-a-week basis. In the legislative operations budget, funding was included to provide for the potential to partner with other tri-city communities to support a Greenest Region Core volunteer to create a tri-city sustainability plan to help guide the actions of each municipality. The Greenest Region Core is a partnership between the Mayor's Caucus and the AmeriCorps that started in 2018 and pairs volunteers with GRC communities for approximately 11 months to lead sustainability projects. It is partly funded by the Federal Corporation for National and Community Service, the Service Illinois Commission, and the sponsor community. The City of Batavia is currently taking the lead on this project. Lastly, the general fund proposes a transfer of $201,000 to the General Capital Projects Fund and $749,250 to the Capital Equipment Fund. Both of these funds are traditionally funded from transfers from the general fund, as there is no dedicated funding source for these activities. There are several highlights to point out in the special revenue funds. These are, there are 20 special revenue funds, including, for example, the motor fuel tax fund and all of the special service area funds. The motor fuel tax fund revenue saw an increase of over $400,000 for the current fiscal year and will again see that increase in fiscal year 22 and 23. This is due to the state of Illinois implementing the Rebuild Illinois program, where local governments receive six payments over three years to assist with infrastructure investment. These additional funds will assist the city in funding the East State Street and the North Calts Road Street programs. As the city council may recall, we have been working over the past year to review the city's policies regarding the soliciting of funds on behalf of the city by our volunteer commissions and committees. While we anticipated to have completed the review by now, it currently remains unresolved. We fully intend for this to be completed prior to the start of the next fiscal year, May 1, but we also recognize it may be causing some concern and strife. Therefore, if the council consents, the general fund would be able to support a transfer of $10,000 to both the Cultural Arts Commission and the Beautification Committees. These transfers are not in the proposed budget before you this evening, but with your consent, the budget will be revised to reflect those transfers. It should also be noted that the revenues for the Tourism Fund, which is supported by the hotel motel tax, are estimated to be down over 48% over fiscal year 21 budget and only slightly more than the projected 21 revenues. This will certainly have an impact on programming contemplated by the city and the funding that the city contributes to the Geneva Chamber of Commerce. Lastly, the budget for SSA Number 1 does include funding for the addition of recycling bins in the downtown area for a trial program, as discussed at a previous city council meeting. The pilot study will be from May to July with the placement of either a modified recycling can, which is our standard downtown garbage can with a blue lid, or a modified recycling cart with a gasket installed to discourage the placement of organic material and other inappropriate materials. Additionally, signs will be placed at each location showing what can be recycled at that location. Over the 90 days of the pilot program, staff will work with Lakeshore Recycling Systems to monitor any contamination of the recycled materials and the viability of continuing and/or expanding the program. On another positive note, final debt payments are due during fiscal year 2022 for general obligation bonds that are attributed to the general fund. The only remaining general obligation debt is the alternate revenue debt, which is paid by user fees and not levied on the property tax bill. Once these payments are made, there is no debt in the general fund, and the fund will be closed. There's lots going on in the various capital projects funds. A complete list of all capital projects contemplated is included in the agenda packet beginning on page 131. In the General Capital Projects Fund, many of the projects relate to facility repairs for City Hall and the Police Department facilities. The city council previously approved a facilities assessment study. The study was completed in early 2020, but the pandemic has stymied progress. The fiscal year 2022 budget includes those repairs that are deemed a necessity. In the meantime, staff will continue to formulate a plan, including funding requirements, to implement findings from the facilities assessment study to present to the city council at a future work session. The Infrastructure Capital Projects Fund is supported by a 1/2% non-home rule sales tax. In fiscal year 2022, the budget contemplates $1 million for the annual road improvement program and continuation of other sidewalk, tree, and streetscape maintenance programs. There is also funding included for storm sewer infrastructure improvements. Identified potential projects include extension of drainage structures and ditch regressing, installation of sump pump collectors, and localized drainage improvements, all at various locations throughout the city. In the TIF 2 and TIF 3 capital budgets, funding for the right-of-way acquisition for the East State Street construction project has been included. The Capital Equipment Fund was the hardest hit in the current fiscal year, with nearly $1.8 million in planned expenditures delayed or deferred. As such, fiscal year 2022 will see a large increase over the fiscal year 21 projected, but only a slight increase from the fiscal year 21 budget. Due to the deferral in equipment and vehicle purchases, this fund will continue to see an increase in expenditures over the next several years. For fiscal year 22, the budget includes the purchase of a replacement for fire truck 201. This truck will be 28 years old when the purchase is expected to be completed. Fire trucks are planned for 20 to 25 years of frontline service. NFPA 1901, the standard for automotive fire apparatus, recommends that fire apparatus over 25 years old should be replaced. In addition, the maintenance and repair expenses have been increasing over the past several years, and spare parts are either difficult to find or no longer available. It is recommended that the purchase of the fire truck, which is $1.2 million, be financed over a period of seven years. In addition to the fire truck, there are various other vehicle replacements and equipment replacements that are identified in the packet, again, beginning on page 131. The enterprise funds include both the electric and wastewater/wastewater funds, along with refuse, cemetery, and commuter parking funds. For fiscal year 2022, neither the electric utility nor the water/wastewater utility are proposing a rate adjustment. However, it should be noted that there is a strong likelihood that such adjustments will be required in fiscal year 23. In the electric division, planning for the design and infrastructure for the Southeast Area Master Plan will continue with anticipated expenditures by way of a bond issuance for a substation and related feeders. In the water/wastewater division, capital expenditures related to the Geneva East Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project are included in the budget, along with various other projects relating to the wastewater treatment plant, water main projects, and vehicle and equipment In summary, the fiscal year 2022 budget remains relatively flat when compared to the fiscal year 21 budget. In looking at all 37 funds, revenues and expenditures are estimated at 3.7% below the fiscal year 21 budget. The city's financial position, due to our continued responsible approach to budgeting and forecasting, is anticipated to remain stable throughout the current fiscal year and upon conclusion of fiscal year 2022. Prior to entertaining comments or questions or comments on the fiscal year 2022 budget, I have asked Assistant City Administrator McCready and HR Generalist Johnson to provide a brief overview of the city's employee benefits. The overview is based upon a request from Alderman received during last year's health insurance renewal and again during strategic planning. So at this time, I will turn the microphone over to Ben and Mira.
Thank you. I'm here in council chambers this evening, and then joining us virtually, we have HR Generalist Mara Johnson. As Stephanie indicated, in response to these questions we've had and inquiries in the past, we've spent some time looking at our comparable communities and trying to analyze these to see if we could shed some more light on this topic. And at this point, I'm going to invite Mara. If, Mara, is your mic working? Are you live with us?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We sure can. I'm going to let you take it away with this evening's presentation.
All right, thank you. So, this was one of the first projects that I started working on when I started a few months ago, and we just want a brief overview of what the benefits that we offer here at the City of Geneva. So if you look at the fringe benefits that we offer, other than health insurance, basic health insurance, there are dental insurance, vision, we do offer 457 plan, which is something in addition to IMRF pension plan that we offer. We also offer flex spending, the pendant care account, where employees can deduct money tax-free for health or daycare, childcare expenses. And then we offer life insurance, and we also have the IMRF and the police and fire pension, and we also have the employee assistance program. And next to those, you'll see whether or not it's a shared cost, or whether the employee only contributes, or the employer only contributes to that program. only contributes, or the employer only contributes to, to that program. So let's take a look at health insurance benefits. I think this is where most of the questions came last year. We offer four plans, they're all Blue Cross Blue Shield plans. There's a PPO plan, which most of our employees are on, which you'll see in a later slide. And then we also have an HMO, Blue Advantage, and an HMO Illinois plan. We also have an HSA plan, which is a health savings account, a high deductible plan, which only one employee is on, which you'll see later. We have three tiers of coverage, single, single plus one, and then family. I hope that was intentional.
Bear with us one moment.
There we go. My apologies.
There we go.
Okay. All right. So let's look at the plan demographics. So you'll see that most, we have about 65 employees that are on the PPO plan. So that's a plan most utilized by, by our employees at this point. I mean, that PPO plan's offer choice to people, so I'm guessing that's, that's why people have gone that route. We do note that there are nine employees that have opted out of the, the, the health insurance option altogether, so that's, that's interesting to know. And then at the bottom, you'll see the amount of non-bargaining unit employees and bargaining unit employees that have signed up for the program. The breakdown is in that format as well. All right. So let's talk about our renewal experience, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with, and what that has been over the last few years. If, take a look, our last experience was 4.6%. Over the last few years, it's been relatively low in terms of increases or an average, especially when it comes to the market and how volatile health insurance can be. A lot of these increases are based on your experience, how many people are signed up, what, what kind of medical experiences or emergencies they're having, or who comes on and off the plan. So the average is 1.9%. You'll see a column there where it says the cost, and so those, that's the cost over the last few years for our health insurance that the city has paid. Now, the employees do pay a percentage, but the costs that you see in those columns are what the city of Geneva has paid. And if you look at it, it's been relatively flat over the last few years. So let's look at our comparable communities, our communities in the Chicagoland area. We surveyed several communities in the area. We got a pretty good response. We had about 30 municipalities that responded to us. And we asked them, what was your renewal experience like this, for your fiscal year that you're in? And if you look at the purple dot, that's Geneva at 4.6%. And then the average is in red, and other communities are around us. So the average is about 4.1%. And if you look at the dots, you see that most of the communities fall in that 4%, 4% to 5% increase, increase range. So looks like we're, we're comparable in terms of increases. Now, one of the questions that, that we had was contributions. How much of, does the employer contribute versus the employee? And if you take a look at the bar graph in front of you, you'll see that 14 of those communities were within the 80% to 85% range, where the employer, that's what they pay for the employee's health insurance premium. Geneva is at 80% on average across plans, and so we're right within the, that 14, 14 community range. You'll see that there's one community that's lower, and then there's several other communities that are a little bit higher. So in terms of a timeline for renewal, we have a November 1 where, you know, it health insurance renews. We do need employees to make selections by October 1 because we do bill ahead with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So we start our process pretty early in July. And then what happens is that we have an initial meeting with the broker, Lundstrom, and we talk about what they think the renewal experience is like. Then they, we go to Blue Cross Blue Shield, they look at our experience, you know, how many people do we have on the plan, costs over the last year, and then they make a proposal in terms of increase or decrease, hopefully, to our plan. We then negotiate, we can negotiate with them and can use whatever quivers we have in our arrow. And then we go ahead and bring it to council for the COW meeting and then hopefully for final approval in, hopefully in August, so that we can give employees a time, enough time for open enrollment to sign up or make changes to the plan before we implement it. So in summary, it's, you know, it looks like the 2021 increase is in line with other municipalities in the area, around that 4%, 4% mark. And the benefits we offer in terms of the contribution is in line with what other municipalities in our area offer. And then also, insurance remains a key component of our benefits package. It's important in terms of retention and recruitment strategy for the city of Geneva. So I certainly thought it was beneficial when I was, you know, when I was applying for the position. So we have an established timeline and we will, if we need to, identify alternatives with the broker, should we have a permanent increase next fiscal year.
Okay.
Thank you, Mira. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
So I'd like to close out this presentation by again thanking those who helped put this budget together for your consideration. First, I would like to acknowledge and thank our senior management team, whose faces and names appear on the slide before you, just in case you forgot what some of us look like. In addition, I would like to thank the individuals listed on this slide, who were also instrumental in preparing the proposed budget before you this evening. It is through the efforts of all, we are able to present to you a balanced budget where revenues are equal to or exceed expenditures, and that, and that represents the value stated in the strategic plan and best serves the citizens of this community. The last slide shows the schedule that is anticipated for the adoption of the fiscal year 2022 budget. Following this evening's discussion, the budget will be available on the city's website for public review. In addition, we will set aside time at each subsequent meeting to discuss and/or review portions of the budget as the council desires. Lastly, a public hearing will occur at the February 1 city council meeting, and the city council will be asked to consider and approve a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2022 budget. Department heads and supervisors are all present this evening, albeit virtually, to entertain any questions you may have regarding the information presented or the information contained in the packet. As we recognize this is a lot of information, you likely have not had time to review everything, we would do, as we have done in the past, encourage the city council to submit any additional questions in writing to me. And then each week, we will, we will prepare responses to any questions submitted and post those responses on the city's website, so that everybody has the benefit of seeing the questions and the responses. Again, I would like to thank you for your time this evening, your leadership and support throughout this past year. And, and now I'll return the floor to the mayor to entertain any questions you might have and stop sharing my screen.
Thank you, City Administrator Dawkins, Assistant City Administrator McCready, Ms. Johnson, thank you as well. Ladies and gentlemen from the committee, any questions or comments for either the city administrator, assistant city administrator, or HR specialist, Mira Johnson? We have Alderman Marks with his hand up. Floor is yours, sir.
Stephanie, it's, it's a question for you. Did we reinstate the police officer that we had in the budget for the current year for next year to hire?
Yeah. The, the, sorry. The position was never removed from the budget, we just haven't filled it. And so again, we, we have not filled it yet. Part of our constraints are when we can get somebody into the academy. So that, that's one of the reasons. You will note, we have a couple retirements coming up, we have several vacancies coming up, so we will be needing to fill a police officer. I don't see us necessarily being fully staffed anytime soon, again, due to the constraints of being able to get somebody into the academy. And we just finished testing in December, and we won't have a new list till probably into Feb, beginning of February? End of February. So, so yes, the position is still in the budget, but it has not been filled as of this date. And again, with other vacancies, it probably won't get filled for the next six or eight months at the earliest.
Okay, but it's still in the budget for next year then?
It is. That is correct.
Okay. Are there any other new hires planned in the, in the proposed budget?
No, there are no other proposed new full-time employees. The only kind of pseudo-position that was proposed is that sustainability volunteer, which would be a temporary one-time expenditure that we would do, again, with the cities of Batavia and St. Charles.
Did we put the seasonal help back in, the summer help, this in the current budget for this year?
Yes.
For next year?
Yes.
Because we didn't use them.
The summer help is in the budget. That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to ask right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Marks. Anyone else from the committee? Questions for any of the professional staff? Alderman Kaven? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other budget for the upcoming year? Are there any other positions that we're going to be looking to be refilling that maybe are leaving some of the different departments, aside from police or fire?
If I understand your question correctly, you're asking if positions that are coming vacant are going to be refilled? Is that correct?
That is my question, yeah.
Yes, so the fiscal year 22 budget contemplates that staffing levels will remain consistent. In other words, the positions that are currently approved are approved for fiscal year 2022. As is our practice, anytime there is a vacancy, we do review those positions, we do look to make sure that the position we're filling is the right position that we need, and whether we need that position or not. So we do a thorough review before we actually post the job. You'll notice sometimes there's a little bit of a delay between when somebody leaves and we actually post the job, because we are looking to make sure that we are actually filling what would best serve the needs of the city. So currently, yes, it is anticipated that all of the FTEs, full-time positions that we have in place today, vacant or filled, would be the same moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the virtual deus? Alderman Kilburg, did you have your hand up, sir?
My question was answered.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Berger?
I guess I wanted to thank Mira Johnson for the presentation about benefits. When we talk about comparable communities, are we talking about city, city employees? So.
Yes, I, this is Ben McCready, and I can answer that question. So when we, when we start looking at comparable communities, we look at a series of other municipalities and other organizations here within the Chicagoland region that are uniquely comparable to Geneva. So again, based on proximity, size, other characteristics, but we try and, we have a group of communities we look for to see how we stack up against them.
But they're all municipalities in terms, they're not park districts, school districts, library districts, they're villages or cities?
Yes, we're looking at other villages or, or cities, correct.
Okay. And then that HSA that only one employee takes advantage of, is that something that makes sense to get rid of if only one person is, is, maybe this isn't the right conversation, time to have that conversation, but.
So the reason we.
It's interesting there. I appreciate seeing the breakout and to see it at a time, I appreciate that, Stephanie, for bringing that too, because again, sometimes when we're, we're, you know, right against open enrollment and things as we're discussing this, and so I appreciate just getting those numbers in a, in a format like this, so we can look at them and, you know, the, like I said, it's interesting to see how many people go for that PPP, PPO option, although I'm not surprised PPOs are what most Americans are pretty comfortable with, but that we have the HSA that only one person takes advantage of.
So you may recall, several years ago, we added the HSA to our plan design to give us another option should the PPO and the HMO plans become such that we can't afford those. So we wanted to put the HSA in place, so that if we at some point started moving everybody to a high deductible plan, we already had that in place and it wasn't something new and a surprise. By offering it and only having one person in it, it's not costing us any different than not to offer it. So we feel like it's a good tool to have in our toolbox. And for that one employee, they, they've been on it since day one and they really find benefit in it. So really to not have that plan would not create any additional savings or any benefit than to having the plan.
Okay, that makes sense. I could see somebody at a certain stage of life or depending, you know, the HSA could be a great option for them. I mean, we've, you've obviously done a great job of keeping our costs steady or even lower than what we were a few years ago. It just, it makes me nervous, because we talk about, you know, if you have an employee that, or a couple employees have catastrophic events in their lives, what kind of, what kind of increase you could be dealing with in the coming years. But I'm sure I'll have more thoughts on that, but I just wanted to say I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Anyone else from the committee? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mary, or Mayor. On the, on the, the HSA issue, we don't provide any seed money for that, do we?
No, we do not.
No, we don't. I'm sorry. Sorry.
No, that's, that's fine. The, and again, I wanted to say, yeah, thanks, thanks for all the staff for stewarding this, this process. It's always good to see the stability that we bring to the, to the economics of the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Any committee member? Yes, Alderman Kasserag?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did also just want to thank everybody for a great presentation here and also for the stewardship that you guys have done over the last few years, especially from what I can see with the, that the city has or lack of. And it's just really great to see it all written down and presented like this. So thank you for, not just everybody this year, but all the previous years. I did have a couple quick questions. One is on, I just didn't quite follow the fire engine. 1.2 million is budgeted, but you said financed it over seven years?
So you'll, you'll see in the budget, it's kind of like the dollars are put in and the dollars are taken out, and then the financing charge is budgeted. But you have to show first the original expenditure, but you'll see the corresponding revenue, which is the note that we would take out. So you'll have 1.2 million in revenue and 1.2 million in expenditure, and then you would have a different, a just, an additional expenditure line that shows the actual payment for that first year.
Okay. But 1.2 million is the total estimated cost, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then I did want to follow up on the recycling bin program. So is that what the $20,000 is in SSA number one? Soon?
I don't know the exact amount off the top of my head, but that sounds, it's for 10 recycling cans?
Probably about two each. So where, SSA number one expires when? So is there been any? So is there been any discussion or anything, even for next year, if the pilot program works? Or if it's going to be put off to fiscal year 2023? Where would that continuing money be coming from?
So that's obviously going to be a question that we are going to have to address as we look at what we do with the expiring SSA.
Okay.
I think it's a little premature at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the committee? Before I recognize Alderman Marx for a second time, is there anyone who has not yet spoken and wishes to do so? Alderman Swanson? Yes, sir. Floor is yours. Thank you.
Microphone's off.
Your microphone is off, Mr. Swanson. Or it says it's not, but... Let us double-check that audio for a moment. Mr. Collins?
We don't have him muted. He can be able to turn his mic on or off.
It is on. It shows that it's on, but we can't hear him. Can he, is there a number he can call or...
Uh-oh, it's apparently, there's a hostage situation.
Okay, he will email. Okay. Okay, I saw your sign. Thank you. I apologize. We will try to resolve this issue. But we will, if you email your questions, they will be responded to, and they will be posted for all to see.
And if you blink twice, we know you're in danger. Alderman Marx, then Alderman McGowan?
You know, Stephanie, you had a slide out there to transfer money to the cultural arts, the beautification, and then the mental health. I personally would like to see those put in the budget. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but while we're looking at it, I would love to see those amounts put in just to see how it all flushes out. I don't know if there's a consensus for that or not, but that's what I would like to see, actually.
Let me just add one clarification. Mental health, they got additional funding last year. And what we've recommended is to keep that same additional funding. So that is in what you see tonight because that's through part of the property tax levy. So the only additions that we would be looking at for consensus tonight would be the $10,000 for beautification and the $10,000 for the Culture Arts Commission.
Personally, I would like to see those put in the budget as we discuss it, if there's consensus for that.
Does anyone object to that recommendation by Alderman Marx? I don't see any objections. There seems to be unanimous consent in that regard, so that'll be added. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Good, okay. I actually, thank you, Alderman Marx, for bringing that up, the funding for Beautification Committee and Cultural Arts. And I just wanted to reiterate what others have said as well. I feel like this was an excellent budget presentation after probably one of the worst years that the city of Geneva has experienced in a while. So I also just want to commend all of the department heads. Stephanie, you and your team have done a tremendous job. I know that people were working nights and weekends and just to keep the city running smoothly during this crazy time. So, and I know the work is ongoing. So again, just my thanks to everyone for all the work that they've been doing. A lot of it, so much of it is taking place behind the scenes. But it is very much appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the committee? Questions, comments regarding what's been presented this evening? And of course, we also have our department heads joining us virtually as well, if there's any specific questions for them. Before I recognize Alderman McGowan a second time, anyone else who has not yet spoken wishes to speak? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. Also, I was also curious about the capital improvement projects in regard to the City Hall building. And I saw that the staircase was going to, will be rebuilt. The elevator replaced. Were these all things that were deemed necessary based on the building inspection? Like, is the staircase crumbling or something? I just wanted to know why all of that was in the list in the packet for this evening.
Sure. So the staircase that we're referring to is the staircase that's right outside of the kitchen break room area. The bottom stairs have actually rotted away, so that staircase is inoperable. One of the thoughts we had, since we need, this building is not accessible, one of the thoughts was to do an outside elevator. Again, these are budgeted and projected, but obviously, we would have to do more research before we did any expenditure. But the idea would perhaps be to put an external elevator where that staircase is to eliminate the lift that's inside the building that we use that goes up the stairs because that one is getting so antiquated, we can't get the parts when it fails in order to provide more accessibility to City Hall.
Good, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee members? Perhaps who have not yet asked a question or shared a comment, wish to do so? Alderman Kilburg? Floor is yours, sir.
I have a question. As we look to the recovery of some of the more vital businesses as it relates to our downtown economy, I have a question in regard to the 2% Places for Eating Tax that we enacted a few years ago. But with the approval of the 0.5% sales tax increase, that was waived. I was wondering if, in fact, the Places for Eating Tax could be resurrected, the 2%, with the idea that those funds would be used to re-energize and help preserve a lot of the restaurants that have been critical to the economy of our downtown and in Geneva as a whole. And I wonder if anyone on staff would know if that's a possibility? If that could be something that could be given some consideration? We don't know what the status of the CARES Act and what they're going to do actually for small business. But as you look at the directory of the distribution of CARES Act I to the businesses, a lot of that was, I mean, I'm sure it was appreciated. But if you look at it in regard to their totally, their total operating expenses, a lot of the receipts or a lot of the benefits that they got from it was less than what they might be paying for one month's rent. And these businesses have been struggling for 10 months and may well struggle for another six months. So I'm guessing, would it be possible to resurrect the 2% Places for Eating Tax with the idea that those funds would be rebated back to the restaurants and that you'd set up, you'd create a sunset of, let's say, three years? And to help those businesses get back on their feet? I don't know if anyone on staff would be prepared to answer that question now, but I would like to entertain it and see if they could do some research to see if that could be something that we bring back. That's all I have.
I believe the short answer is that the Places for Eating Tax is something the council can do. We would have to basically start from the beginning. The one thing I'm not sure about is whether or not the cap that we have for non-home rule sales tax would apply to a Places for Eating Tax. So I would need to look at that. But I guess I would, before we do much research, I would like to know what the consensus of the council is because most of you will recall that was a pretty contentious issue at the time. And I don't know that even with the businesses struggling, I'm not sure that an additional tax is what they are looking for. But again, I would defer to the council, and staff is, will do whatever research is deemed necessary.
Alderman Bruno on this matter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It so happens, I had a downtown restaurateur that was a strong opponent to the Places for Eating Tax back in the day, now being a proponent for it, depending on how we can spend it. I think this is, I get the sense that we could get a substantially different reaction from the restaurant community if it were brought up again. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity and just for the benefit of discussion and debate, could not restaurateurs, or any business for that matter, implement their very own, for lack of a better word, COVID surcharge fee if they so chose? There's nothing that precludes any business from doing that?
The Attorney General has said that a surcharge may be added as long as it's clear and accurate that what the surcharge is and that it's not labeling as a tax. But as long as it says it's a surcharge, I know there are some businesses in town, not restaurant-related, but service industry-related, that have added like a $3 surcharge on their services for cleaning and that type of thing. And they clearly identify that before you partake in those services.
Alderman Maloudra, is that your hand up? Or are you winning the titles in 1968 games in Mexico City? So, okay.
All right. Okay, thanks. So I've heard something similar to what Alderman Bruno has heard, although I admit that that was before I understood what Stephanie just said about the surcharge. But regardless, I think that one thing that we can learn from the last time we tried a Places for Eating Tax is that we could go about it a little bit differently and start by, you know, talking with the restaurants to see if they would be willing to support something before we get too far into the implementation of it. I can think of reasons why a surcharge would be a better approach. I could think of reasons why perhaps they would appreciate the Places for Eating Tax more, you know, to get uniformity or whatever. But that's just us assuming. I think in this case, we should probably start by, you know, going straight to the restaurant owners to see what they think. That's it.
I guess I'll just ask the question. Is there, does there, is there consensus from this committee that we should pursue such discussion?
I have a question. May I ask something?
Me a question? Mind the question, not a...
Yes, please do.
Go ahead, Jeanne.
Okay. Well, before I raise my hand, I would be in favor of pursuing, reaching out to the restaurant owners to see how they feel about this. But I hope that it comes with the message that the city... Well, I certainly, I'm going to speak for myself. I don't know. This isn't something that I'm pushing, that I'm hoping that the restaurants will say yes to. I don't want the restaurant owners to somehow have the, or get the impression that this is something that the council is trying to, like enforce upon them or force upon them, I guess. I just really want to, I hope that we will tread lightly with however this is approached because I feel completely neutral about this right now. I definitely want the, if there's like an overwhelming consensus from the restaurant owners, yea or nay, I definitely want to follow their lead because they are the ones that are really struggling right now due to the pandemic. So if we could just somehow communicate this in such a way that they, the restaurant owners, understand this isn't something the council is like trying to push for, that that makes sense. Does it?
It does. I just, I need to clarify, and I know all of you are aware, but on the off-chance there's folks tuning in who perhaps are not aware, the city of Geneva does not have the authority to segregate such a tax exclusively for restaurateurs. If such a tax was considered and implemented, it would affect all establishments that sell food, including grocery stores. And it's my assumption that if this tax is implemented at the request of those purveyors, that they would assume that that revenue would then be returned to them directly. I would assume. We're looking at well over 100-plus purveyors in the community that provide food. You know, whether it be a restaurateur exclusively or a ice cream shop that also sells what-have-you, or a cafe and bar, or a Starbucks Fresh Time, just so everyone's aware, of course. Alderman Bruno?
Yeah, well, I agree, Mayor, and I agree, Jean. The, we're, I think we need to, if we're discussing this as a way to help the business community during this unusual time, we have to figure out how that money's going to be spent. I, like you, Jeanne, I don't, you know, I don't know what we can do. I think we're by law going to be, we can't be too targeted, I don't think. This, I think those monies have to be used equitably across the board. But I'd enjoy entertaining the conversation as to, with the restaurateurs, how we'd use this revenue. And then we'd come to some consensus as to whether it's realistic and whether we want to pursue it. Thanks.
Alderman Ruby?
Thank you. I feel like we're kind of getting in over our heads. The surcharge seems the better approach here in just educating people that the surcharge is an option versus getting into this other tax and having to go through the logistics of everything that would entail. I feel like the bottom line is, you know, it's not just the restaurants that are struggling. It would be nice for, you know, all of our businesses to be able to take advantage of the surcharge. But for the restaurants in particular, because of COVID and eating and their business really has been impacted the most, I am sure. You know, maybe, I don't know if this is a possibility, but maybe the Chamber could assist in some type of promotion, you know, just encouraging people to do carryout. And, you know, each week, the Chamber could, people could submit their restaurant receipts online and be entered into a drawing for a Chamber gift certificate. You know, something like that. Just, I feel like the biggest thing that's going to help these restaurants is not a tax, it's not a surcharge. It's more business. So anything that can be done to encourage people to order takeout, I think is a more logical approach, in my opinion. Easier said than done, but I think that's where, if we put our thoughts there, I think that's a good thing to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Caven?
Thank you. I don't know, I mean, I think I'm definitely willing to have the discussion, but I don't think that city staff needs to put a lot of energy into finding out all these different specifics. I guess for me, the question would be, if something like this was to, if we were to go down a path like this, what type of latitude do we have with redistributing those funds back to businesses in Geneva in general? I know we're talking specifically about restaurants and how hard they've been hit. But I guess my main question would be, if we did something like this, what type of leeway would we have to actually redistribute those as we wanted to? So I think it would be good to find something like that out to know if it's even possible. And then the second portion for me would be, again, before a lot of staff time was spent, you know, I would want to do a little bit more personal research with talking to some of these individual business owners and see if this is something that they would be on board with, even considering before we expend too much energy and resources moving that direction. But then... But that's just my thought. Thank you.
Anyone else on this topic? Alderman, oh, Alderman Berger, then Alderman Kilburg.
Yeah, I was going to ask Alderman Kilburg if he had an idea of how, or how, does he imagine this as a, just a straight rebate if we take in 2% from, you know, 2% Places for Eating Tax at a restaurant number wide? You know, do they get that money back in a grant form or something? I mean, I could see a restaurant owner being in favor of that, but if we say it's going to go into a fund that'll do facade improvements on State Street or, you know, beautification projects or something, I, you know, I think, I'd be glad to certainly, if we want to each take 10 restaurants and try to talk to owners and see what they need, but I think that's going to be question one A would be, well, you know, if you're going to put a Places for Eating Tax, just as maybe our, maybe as our dining, you know, is coming back to life, hopefully in the summer, you know, where's it going? So, and I don't know if you could answer that question, and I don't know if the city is available to answer what are legally, what legally we could actually do.
All I'm saying is that I think this is something that we discussed, and again, at that time, it wasn't, it wasn't something that was going to be very well received. And we leveraged it, we got the 0.5%. I'm just saying that we're in unusual times. And I may have used the wrong term when I said restaurants, I meant all the establishments that would have been previously impacted by the eating, Places for Eating Tax. And the financial impact on these businesses has been, I mean, it's been catastrophic. And we really need something to save these restaurants and make sure that we can reserve them and that they can come back and recover and continue to contribute to the, to what Geneva has become over the last decade or two. $2 on $100 expenditure in a restaurant, I don't think is going to turn anybody away. And I think that we can lead something here in the Fox Valley. I think other communities would look at this, because it's something that you might say, well, let them decide what they want to do as far as charging people. Well, I think that if we had something that was uniform across the board, I think would be beneficial. And if we set a sunset of three years, I think that gives these people to get back on their feet again and return to where we were in February of 2019. So that's all I'm asking. I don't know if we can do this or not. I'm just saying, I thought about this. I think that this might be something that's viable. I think it will show our business owners, those that are, at least this is an important segment of our business owners, that we're concerned and that we're going to try to do something that we might be able to get accomplished that would help them. And they might say, no, we don't want any part of that, and I'm fine with that. All I'm saying is, is can we reach out and ask if we can help in this way? That's all I'm saying. And, you know, we can throw a lot of reasons up why we don't want to do this, or why it's not going to work right now, but let's at least explore it and make the oversight and show people that we're concerned and that we're putting something behind it potentially. That's all I've got.
May I recommend that perhaps our economic development team sends out a survey or inquiry, as it were, to our, to our business community and see what that results are? That'd be a good first step, I think. Anyone else on that topic or anything else that's been presented this evening? Alderman Kasserag?
That did remind me of something that came up during the presentation that I wanted to discuss, the, the down 48% in the tourism fund that you had mentioned, Stephanie, during the presentation. We know this money generally goes to the Chamber of Commerce, and in that way, it does support our businesses in our community and our friends at the Chamber of Commerce. And in, I guess at this point, I'm thinking regenerate and re-promote all of our festivals and things like that, when they're ready to come back or retool them if we're not ready to come back in a way that, you know, we can see some normality coming back. So I guess, you know, I was a little surprised when we just said we're down 48% during that presentation and moved on. I guess my first question would be for you, Stephanie, how much money is 48% in real dollars?
So in dollars, we're looking at, give me one second here, I think it's about $190,000 versus $300,000. And, give me one second. Tourism, okay, so we're looking at hotel motel tax. In 2020, we collected $258,000, so that was the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2020. This year, we're projecting that we're going to collect $140,000, and for 2022, we're projecting $191,000. And then by, currently by ordinance, the chamber gets 3/5ths of our collections. But again, I-
Are there, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, please continue, and then I'll ask-
I think you'll recall at strategic planning, we've talked about that, we need to look at all of this in it as a full picture. And quite frankly, I don't know that, that tonight, we have those answers, but we certainly, the purpose of my pointing that out in the presentation is that we are going to be looking at what we do. I know that Kathleen has been in conversations with the chamber, so that they're aware that the revenues are down, and obviously, they need to be looking at what they do as well.
Do we have options to bring money in from elsewhere, other funds? Or is this fund sort of legally being only funded by the hotel motel tax?
I guess I would ask Rita to chime in, but I believe that the tourism fund is solely, I know that it's solely supported by hotel motel tax, and beyond that, you know, I don't think you want to, I don't know that there are other options.
I would, I guess for tonight, I hear you that it's not a great time to get into a detailed discussion here, but I, I would like to see what effort we can do to replace some of those funds. I'm not saying we're going to be able to come up with $100,000, $200,000, but I think we can show our community and the chamber and all of our businesses that we're, we're still here to help support them in some way whatsoever. If that's not possible, obviously, that's fine, but I don't know if there's consensus with the council. I'd like to ask staff to look into what might be available there.
And I would just like to point out that the money that is given to the chamber is done through an independent agreement that we have with the chamber to be our visitor's arm, meaning they use, they can only use that money towards bringing people to town. So that is not money, obviously, that goes, obviously, bringing people to town helps the businesses, but it does, it's not money that goes directly from the chamber to the businesses, it's bringing people to town.
Right. And supports our festivals and other things like that. So anyway, I just wanted to voice my support for figuring something out there if possible, working through the budget in the next couple of months.
Thank you. Anyone else from the committee on any matter of the presentation this evening? Alderman Berger?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
This would be for Stephanie. You talked about the budget as a, this kind of a big picture question. The budget is a plan, and if, you know, if things change, we change the plan. I mean, looking at this budget, what, what do you see, where are the areas that you see the most likelihood for changes? Or the ones where you look at and you think, oh, that's, that's one that, you know, especially in the current environment, you could see going, you know, that maybe has the biggest gap in what it might turn out to be.
So I would start with saying that I believe that the budget that we presented before you this evening is a, a strong budget, assuming that our assumptions are relatively close. I don't, I don't foresee any major changes. Again, it's much like this year, a budget is a plan, and what that means is while you budget for expenditures, if you don't realize the revenue, you can't make the expenditure. So it's all dependent upon what the revenue streams look like. But I do not see, personally, I don't see anything that today would have a major change. If I did, I wouldn't have presented that.
Okay. In terms, I mean, with COVID, we're still, you know, I think, again, all of us never would have bet we'd be in this place. And, you know, today, I was hearing, you know, vaccines, my in-laws live in Wisconsin, that, you know, they might have been getting vaccines till the summer up there for regular folks. I mean, how much of an impact do you think COVID could have on this budget, you know, in the next 12 to 18 months? It's just so hard to know. We just still don't know where we stand with vaccines and in terms of how many people are actually going to get them and the rollout and everything. And in terms of revenue with people returning to restaurants and hotels and, you know, shops, if people's shopping habits been changed forever, we don't know that yet.
So I mean, I would, I would say, we did not budget based on, we are 100% back to where we were prior to COVID. We have taken as much into consideration as we can, looking at where the revenues have been coming in, in the, in the middle of COVID. You know, I think we mentioned, you know, we're only, you know, halfway through the current fiscal year. So we're still looking at and revising and making plans and certainly, but the reason we pass the budget, and we pass the budget early, is so that we can start laying the groundwork to get those plans in place, so if things come to fruition, we can move on them. If we wait to see what happens, obviously, we have to pass the budget before the end of the fiscal year, I think it puts us at a disadvantage. So at this point, again, I feel comfortable with what the city's fiscal position is, that we should be able to accomplish most, and if not, then we do like we did this year, and we delay and defer. You know, we don't, we don't go and spend the full budget on May 1, and there's a reason for that.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for a great presentation, and I really appreciate you do build in so much time for all of us to get our feet under us on these, the budget and to ask questions. I do really appreciate the timeline that gives us some air to breathe. So thank you very much.
Anyone else on the committee? I don't see any hands going up?
Or signs.
Or signs being written? That's to Alderman Swanson, of course. Ladies and gentlemen, there is no additional business and there is no action this evening either. So without objection, we're going to double check to see if there's anyone joining us virtually who wants to provide any public comment. I'll ask Mr. McCready and Ms. Dawkins that question.
We have no guests with us virtually.
We have no, we have no guests joining us tonight?
And no public comments.
And no public comment being requested? With that, ladies and gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Bruno, so moves.
Alderman Bruno makes that motion. Ms. Dawkins, please take the role to adjourn this special committee of the whole meeting.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Berger?
Berger, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kasserag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Alderman Swanson with a thumbs up? It's the prerogative of the chair to assume that Alderman Swanson's arms were indeed raised above his shoulders, indicating aye. Meeting is adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much. Happy Monday night.
Thank you.
Night, all.
Good night.
Good night. Have a good week, everyone.